Good evening and welcome to the Mantino Village Board Meeting for Monday, March 18th, 2024. Let's call a meeting to order, and if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, which stands one nation for God.
If we could stay standing for a minute, please, just in honor of Maurice O'Keefe. Maurice was the president of the Board of Trustees for the Mantino Fire Department currently. When he passed, he's also a former fire chief for the Mantino Fire Department for years and a former police officer in the village of Mantino. And Maurice was a valued member of the community and passed away in the last week, so if we could please have a moment of silence for Maurice.
Thank you very much.
Roll call, please.
Boyce, Martin, Dole, Crockett, Geske, Phillips.
We have a quorum. Tonight, as always, we begin with the approval of our minutes. We have our minutes from our March 4th, 2024, meeting, which is what has had included in their packet. Are there any changes, additions, deletions, corrections? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion to waive the reading of minutes and approve them as presented by the clerk.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Crockett, second by Geske. Roll call.
Crockett?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion carries. Public participation, the first person on the public participation list is Matthew Glenn.
Good evening, Village Board. My name is Matthew Glenn, and I have the privilege of serving as principal at Mantino Elementary School. I attended last week at the Planning Commission meeting where it was proposed the project north of the elementary school for housing development. And I just wanted to share our concerns and just share thoughts. I know that it may not be coming to tonight's meeting. If there's some more discussion, just wanted to bring that to light. So, first of all, I know this process has been in the works for a while and a lot of different discussions, and we have some concerns just about the exits and those being hindered by busing at the start of the day, end of the day, how our police force is used at the beginning of the day and end of the day with those exits as well. We also think about students walking home. Normally, students who are car riders, they walk out and around the building, come out behind the school, and I know the village would have to invest in some more sidewalks because of the commercial properties there to make that accessible to kids that are walking back home. So, that's another concern as well. It may require the village for more support on the corner of Marquette and South Creek Drive. Also, just concerns about the traffic on school grounds. On our playground out there every day, we have over 650 students, knowing that this housing project is there, guests in and out all of the times there. We have over 450 kids that ride buses every single day, to school and after school. And so, just knowing where that one exit comes through, where the buses line up there on the road, I know that's something we'd have to work out. Again, it's just the number of sheer number of kids and that housing development, and we know we'll have to work together if this goes through, and we may look at additional supports at school, fencing, all those different things to keep our kids safe. That's what this is about. Can we also ensure that when these properties are rented, we don't have anyone that can't live there because they've got to be 500 feet away from the school? We have certain requirements and things that have to be taken into account for. Again, it's our 700 kids every single day. I realize at the end of this day, this project may go through, but it's how we work together, and we just wanted to share the concerns from the school district to this board, which you guys do so much for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Francine Fademo.
There's quite a bit to say today. Number one, I want you all to know that on next Sunday, there's an Easter egg hunt, and that is sponsored by the Concerned Citizens of Mantino. You may remember that group because we are opposed to the Goshen Purchase. So, anyway, there it is, the Easter egg hunt, 1:00 to 3:00 at Mantino's Legion Park. What I'm here today to talk about is we are once again hoping our mayor and trustees come to their senses and make a motion to rescind the vote that approved the sale of the Kmart property, which is, has been sold to the communist company, Goshen. Our country is daily being infiltrated by Chinese communists encouraged to arrive in America by our un-American, feeble President Joe Biden. What say you, mayor and trustees? If this is beyond your pay grade to answer, you all should resign. You sure didn't worry about us, who you are to protect, from shenanigans. I like that word. It's a little Irish word, actually a long Irish word, but with real meaning these days. Leprechauns in myth are mischief makers. We don't need such gremlins. We need honest mayors and trustees with integrity, desperately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to make a note, a little comment of what the principal was talking about. The people of the area, I know some people that live in townhomes or condos out there on Marquette, and the school bus lining up would be very bad for the entrance and exit into that new subdivision to be on Marquette there by the school. You would have periods of time that emergency vehicles wouldn't be able to get in if somebody wanted to go to work. The buses don't like the cars passing there. And it's also, it's on a curve, so it's sort of blind to the left, to the east, what the traffic that's coming by there. I think the entrance should be off of South Creek, if at all possible. Getting on to my comments about Goshen, I'm always told that I shouldn't be concerned about a security threat to our government. Our government would take care of it. They wouldn't be allowed here if the government didn't think it was okay. But I wanted to let you guys know that there are people in the government that are concerned about it, and they're having hearings about it. And we mentioned how the Five Eyes contacted 60 Minutes, and it was FBI Director Ray and his counterparts from four other countries saying what a security threat this was. And then I want to mention a congressional hearing at the end of January that involved Leon Panetta, former under Obama, was Secretary of State and head of the CIA, and the guy that was, did the same thing for Trump. Well, here's what Democrat Leon Panetta recently said in sworn testimony before Congress when asked if Goshen will be used for industrial espionage. Panetta, mind you, served in the Obama administration as Secretary of Defense and CIA Director. And I quote, Mr. Panetta said, "I don't think there's any question that they're going to take advantage of that situation, and I think we have to be very vigilant about what the hell is going on. That's just the way they operate. They will establish a manufacturing unit, they'll establish whatever they can, and then they will use that for their own intelligence purposes." Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is George Reichert.
Good evening to everybody. Tomorrow's the primary, and I'm in District 6 in Wright Estates down there. And I noticed we have a gentleman that works for the village is running for a county seat. So, I just wonder, that person working for the village and having to attend the board meetings, could be like three, four, or five board meetings a month, is he going to take a leave of absence, vacation, personal time? Because if he's on the payroll here, he can't be going to meetings over there. That's a conflict of interest. And, you know, and that person's got a village vehicle right now, which is fine in the village, but is that village vehicle going to be going to the board meetings in the county, or is he going to take his own personal transportation? Or I just wonder how that's going to work if he's given that seat for District 6. So, I'll probably never get a shed permit for my house over there now, but I figured I'd bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. The next commenter is Ryan McCaffey.
All right, I'm here today. I'm done being nice to you guys. Mr. Nugent, you're full of corruption, sir. Right? You ever heard that term? You're barking up the wrong tree. Have you ever heard that term? You're pretty old, I'm pretty sure you have. You know what the tree is? That tree is the tree of liberty, right? I'm pretty sure you've heard that saying by Thomas Jefferson. Am I correct? I hold a secret security clearance with the federal government. I hope that you've got your finances in order, sir. Made a few calls last week. Just want to let you know, this little insider trade deal you guys got going on here, especially you guys board, yeah, you guys smile. There's a lot of stuff going around with your guys' name on it, especially you and Smitty making some money off some profitable land, huh? You remember that? You remember that deal you made? You just going to sit there? Okay, bud. So, I really hope that, you know, maybe you should just resign and get out of here while you're ahead, especially you board. You guys signed with the CCP, the Chinese Communist Party. You guys realize that, right? You realize that? I want you to know it is we, the people, not we, the government. We, the people, you remember that. There's a reason why the Second Amendment was enacted. You know why it was enacted? For people like you, to protect ourselves and to protect the First Amendment right, freedom of speech. Second Amendment, the right to bear arms against corruption and when the government holds too much power. You said yourself, you signed an NDA with this foreign company, right? Last time I checked, you're on American soil, bud. This is my country, not yours, if that's the case. American soil, yeah, be ashamed. I've been shot at. I've been overseas. And now you're going to hear it from me now because I'm done being nice. I don't care if you take it as a threat anymore either. I've got kids to protect, and I will protect them with every ounce of my blood that I can bleed out of this body. I hope you understand that. A lot of people are mad, but that's all I got to say.
Thank you. The next commenter is Terry Daly or Jerry Daly, Terry Daly?
Good evening. I was just wondering if when you found out that it was a Chinese company going in where Kmart warehouse is, if you discussed it with your spouses or significant others, did you discuss it with your children? Did you consider their opinions? After all, it impacts your family's lives. As for the village of Mantino, that wasn't even on your radar to even include us or care about us. I find it hard to believe that all of your families totally agreed with your decision. I have no idea what you were promised or given, tons of money, a condo in China on the beach. I have no idea. How many of you served in our military? You took an oath to protect America. So, those of you who have served are not upholding the Constitution and you're traitors. Those of you who haven't served our country are also traitors. One day, when there is a disaster at this plant, which many experts told you it would happen, it's just a matter of time. The men, women, and children who are either killed, hurt, or end up with illness, you are the ones to blame. But maybe after the next election, you'll be living somewhere else or vacationing in China, and it won't matter to you. A true American would have never have sold out their families, village, or country, but all of you have.
Thank you. The next commenter is Bob Forsythe.
Well, Tim, it was always, it's always interesting to read what people say. Angela Mori did that thing in the Journal about Insight Magazine, Illinois, phone calls that you had made to try to get this plan in. So, you knew a long time ago. And then, we have Patrick Joyce, another worthless politician. In his website, it states that the community stakeholders and fellow elected officials came to announce Goshen on September 8th, 2023. Now, if I'm not mistaken, I think September comes before November, and we're at a public meeting in November because nothing's been zoned. I don't even, I don't even think we got environmental studies yet. But I know from what I've read that you knew a long time ago. You knew well before because you, we were, the village has been cutting state property. And I asked about that, too. And I asked Chris LaRocque, and he tells me that that's something we just do. I remember that conversation with you. But I still don't understand why we're cutting state property, besides you wanted to make that property and that overpass ramp look really nice for the Goshen people. So, I think it's been in the makes, in the works for a long time. I think you've been trying to pull the wool over us, and you think you did a good job, but you haven't because you're a terrible liar. And yes, I did ask about national security to you at an economic board meeting, and you told me Mantino's got nothing to do with national security. And I find that hard to believe because you are a police officer, a former police officer, and you were probably terrible at that if this is how you run, if you ran a police department like you run this. But I just don't see, you can sit up there and lie to us, and actually, you're not lying to us, you're not saying a word. But what we read, we know you're being lied to. And then we talked about a park next week, last week, $2 million to go over here by Harley Dealer, when we have a big park down the street at Legacy that nobody really uses. I walk there every day, and there's not that many people there. You have a place on the southwest corner, this golf disc or whatever. You could have put all that pickleball stuff, you could have put it all over there. You have a bathroom, you have a parking lot. You could have, you probably could have saved some money, but then again, $2 million wouldn't go to your family. And that's what this is all about because you've gotten rich. Your family's made a lot of money off the village of Mantino. Money's going in the general fund from the sale of Aqua, from those water, and that's what, that's what we're spending now. So...
Village Presidents Report, I just want to comment on the last weekend, the eighth grade girls played for the volleyball state championship down in Pana, Illinois, and they were successful the first couple of games. They played in the state title game and came home with a second place trophy for the state volleyball for the eighth grade girls. So, congratulations to them. I know Diane, you were down there. The girls had a great season. They've only, they've only lost a couple of games the whole time that they were there, the whole time that they've been playing together. So, congrats to them. And it kind of goes back to the last couple of meetings we had where we, you know, had the state championship wrestler here, the boys have qualified in different, you know, in basketball, and we've got some, you know, the girls and the high school girls, the high school boys also. So, kudos to the school district and all the different programs that they have and the great athletes that they're putting forward. Village Administrators Report, Mr. LaRocque.
Thank you. I have nothing this evening, Mayor.
Committee Reports, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Commander. I have nothing tonight, but I do have a meeting at 26, 7:00 AM.
Thank you. Properties and Recreation, Mr. Martin.
Public Safety and Health, Mrs. Dole.
I have no action items on the agenda. My next public safety meeting is April 10th, 7:00 AM here in the village board meeting. Just wanted to tell you guys, I didn't know if you know that the Mantino Police Department is a designated meetup spot. In our parking lot, you'll see a green parking spot that is specifically for internet purchases, exchanges. What are community meetup spots? Community meetup spots are designated spaces for buyers and sellers from an online marketplace to meet in person and conduct their trades. These spaces are brightly lit, public areas with 24/7 lighting. They have 24-hour video surveillance maintained by the local entity. They're ADA accessible. Many local businesses, police stations, and law enforcement agencies around the county have installed meetup spots so that people in their communities have safer spaces to conduct offer-up transactions. How it works? Come to the parking lot or lobby, conduct your transaction, and leave. Or you can come into the police department main entrance, tell them you are there for transaction safe place, and they will have an officer respond to check the item. And I also know that parents of shared custody with children have previously sometimes have met uptown here when the police station was up here because they felt that was a safe place to meet with the parent, the other parent, and not have to go to the parent's home. So, that's obviously a really good, good idea to keep that, if that transaction happens, you know, being well-lit and obviously have an officer there if they can manage that. So, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief, in the new parking lot at the police station, is everything on camera there in the area, the parking area, or is just portions of the thing, or is that...
Everything's on camera, at least by two cameras, probably.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dole. Planning and zoning, Mr. Crockett.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing on the agenda this evening, but we do have a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting scheduled for the 26th of this month at 7:00 AM here in the village boardroom, and the next Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for April 9th, 6:00 PM here in the village boardroom. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Finance, Mr. Geske.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item I have is Resolution 2310, a resolution approving an intergovernmental property transfer agreement between the village of Mantino and the Board of Education School District. So, this is with the new construction of our public works building. Our old public works building has been vacated and school purchasing it for the full appraised value. We ran an appraisal on it to find out what it was worth.
Yeah, we had appraisal. There's two parcels down there, correct, Jim? And there are two different PIN numbers. And the school district is buying the one, the farthest south PIN. The one to the north is not, you know, we're not selling that right now. So, this is the, do you have the value on what...
No. Chris, do you have that?
I believe it was $480,000.
Okay. The next item I have is a motion to approve an audit engagement letter for audit services with CPAs out of Bourbon A for the year 2023 to 2024. They've been doing our audits now for some time, and things tend to work smoothly. Additionally, we have payment of bills, the amount of $163,954.93, of which no TIF bills have been paid, and there have been no bills authorized and paid between board cycle. Our next finance committee meeting is scheduled for April 10th at 7:00 AM. However, I have a conflict with that, so we, I'd like to reschedule that if everyone's calendar is clear. And I spoke with Diane to kind of when we do that with public safety, and I don't know if we can move that either to the 17th or the 24th.
Yeah, I'm giving it to 17th.
So, we can move it to 17th.
Chris, could you send out a notice for everybody?
Yep, I will do that.
So, that will be for both my finance committee meeting and the public safety will move to the 17th of April at 7:00 AM, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geske. General Government, Mr. Phillips.
I have nothing on the agenda.
Okay. Items we'll be voting on in the consent agenda are as follows. Under old business, we have nothing. Under new business, we have Resolution 2310, which is a resolution improving an intergovernmental property transfer agreement between the village of Mantino and the Board of Education of Mantino Community Unit School District Number 5. Item number two is a motion to approve the audit engagement letter for audit services with SKDOs, CPA, and advisors out of Bourbon A for FY 2324, and a payment of their bills in the amount of $163,954.93. Are there any items on the consent agenda that need to be voted on individually? Seeing none, I'd accept the motion to take a single roll call vote on the question of passage of the agenda items as read. Motion by Boyce?
Second.
Second by Dole. Roll call.
Boyce?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm sorry. Motion carries. Accept the motion to approve by am's vote the ordinances, resolutions, motions, and orders contained in the consent agenda as read.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Phillips, second by Crockett. Roll call.
Phillips?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Boyce?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Geske?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Boyce, you have anything tonight?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Martin?
Love it.
Mrs. Dole?
Yeah, definitely. I wanted to appreciate or let you, shout out to the fire department and the police department that gave the escort to the girls' eighth grade volleyball team when they left on Friday and when we came back home. So, if anybody heard the sirens and stuff, you know, it was about, it was 9:00, 9 o'clock, 9:00. I don't remember what time it was.
They've been keeping them busy with parades the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, they have been, but they brought home the hard-fought runner-up trophies. So, and also thank you to Taylor Ford, People's Bank, National Bank of Mantino, Village Hall, Police Department, the Chamber for the lighted signs, for the support to the girls and gave them a shout-out and wished them good luck. So, that was really awesome, too. And the girls' picture was on the board over at Taylor, and they were pretty darn excited about that. So, and that's all I have.
Oh, wait a minute, one more. What about the scout flags this year? Have they made any call to the village hall saying they're going to do that again?
They've been notified that, you know, but they have not brought the new forms to the village hall yet. I talked to them the other day, and they're, you know, the people at the village hall have talked to them, and they, you know, they're in the process of changing their forms, updating them to this year. So, I just, I think they're going to do the program, but until they bring them and give us the green light to go ahead and start passing them out and, you know, and advertising it, we haven't done that yet because they're, but I mean, they've obviously got all the equipment, they've got the flags. It's, you know, I think it's their intention, but they just haven't, they haven't provided the forums as of yet.
Don't want to drop the ball on that one.
Yeah.
I intend to.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. No, no comments.
Mr. Geske?
Congratulations, eighth grade girls for runner-up. And then, I think the other thing that we haven't mentioned is show choir. I think they're ranked number six in the state right now as well, and I know sometimes they don't get the same recognition that we talk about with the sports and parades and stuff, but they're doing a great job as well, so.
Thank you.
As an old show choir president from the 90s, yes, that's a spectacular, what they've done with that, the arts over there has just been amazing. So, they're great, they've had a great year.
To comment on that, too, I mean, at the last board meeting, we had the state champion here from the wrestling team, and we talked about the possibility of putting the state champions, because we had team signs at the entrances to town, but we've never had anything for individuals. And we discussed it at the last committee meeting, I don't remember which committee meeting it was, and it got brought up that, you know, while the state championship, you know, is a big deal and it's a great deal, and we're, you know, very honored that that happens, there are regional and sectional championships, and there's, you know, junior football, and there's all kinds of other teams, and where do we start and where do we stop? You know, the whole idea is to, you know, make people proud of having their name up there, and the last thing you want to do is to not have somebody that is entitled to be there. But at the same token, there's luckily, we've, you know, been the receivers, the town has been the receiver of a lot of different awards over the course of the last several years. So, we really never came to an agreement as to what we were going to do because, you know, no matter what we end up doing, where we put it, you know, whether it's in a park or wherever, and what qualifies to have up there, whether it's, you know, if we have, you know, a state champion who lives in Mantino that goes to a school outside of Mantino, you know, are they considered, too? So, nothing is ever as easy and as clear-cut as what sometimes it makes, you know, it seems to be. So, more to come on that, but a decision has not been made as of now. I have nothing further. I'd accept the motion to adjourn.
So, we really never came to an agreement as to what we were going to do because, you know, no matter what we end up doing, where we put it, you know, whether it's in a park or wherever, and what qualifies to have up there, whether it's, you know, if we have, you know, a state champion who lives in Mantino that goes to a school outside of Mantino, you know, are they considered, too? So, nothing is ever as easy and as clear-cut as what sometimes it makes, you know, it seems to be. So, more to come on that, but a decision has not been made as of now. I have nothing further. I'd accept the motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Which by Geske?
Second.
Second by Dole. Roll call.
Geske?
Yes.
Dole?
Yes.
Boyce? Martin? Crockett?